You guys ready? Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is August 30th, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation, pledge allegiance by Councilmember Cosden.
As we meet today, we are deeply grateful that we were spared the worst effects of Hurricane Adalia. May our gratitude fuel our compassion for those who suffered damage from this storm, and also for those right here in Cape Coral who have still not recovered from Hurricane Ian. Tonight, let us be aware of the needs of our citizens and make wise decisions that will bless our community far into the future. Let us work together in a way that will inspire others to cooperate and achieve peaceful progress. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Hayden has asked to be excused, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosden?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinke?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Okay, item five is changes to the agenda. I have two changes, first of which, public hearing item number 10B1, ordinance 67-23, has been withdrawn from tonight's agenda at the request of city management, and that will come back at a later date. Also, Mr. City Manager, I believe, 6B recognition is being pulled as well, is that correct?
That's correct. The award recipient for tonight, with their family, vacated the area due to the storm, so when they're back in town, we'll reschedule for a later date.
Okay. That's the only two changes that I have. Any other changes on the agenda, or can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to item six is recognitions and achievements. I did have one recognition under 6A for city employees' years of service. That particular individual couldn't be here tonight as well, but I would like to recognize the following employee for their outstanding service, dedication to the city. I want to thank them for their contributions to the city and all efforts they've put into their daily responsibilities to make the city a better place and to serve the citizens of our community. Thank you for being such a valuable member of our team. Madam City Clerk, will you please read the name of the recipient who was unable to attend tonight's presentation?
Scotty Hall, Utilities Department, 20 years of service.
Okay, thank you, and congratulations to Mr. Hall for all those years of service to our, to our community. Okay, I'd like to move on to item seven. Approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from a regular meeting, August 16th, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item eight, citizens' input time. Citizens' input is a maximum of 60 minutes. Set on inputs of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Anyone who wishes to speak tonight will use the podium to my left, your right. Remember to state your name before you get started. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Paul Benasia, and I reside on Pelican Boulevard just north of Rotary Park in Cape Coral. Over the last three months, myself and other residents of Cape Coral have come here and voiced our opposition to Redfish Point. Today, I would like you to meet more residents opposed to Redfish Point. Would all those residents opposed to Redfish Point please stand? I want to thank my fellow residents for attending today. Even though Redfish Point is not on the agenda, and the project has not reached the council, we are here to show our solidarity and make it known that we are here for the long haul. We are resolute in our opposition to Redfish Point for many reasons. It has been 11 months since Hurricane Ian, and many are still recovering from flood and wind damage. It is vivid in my memory. We had a scare last night from Hurricane Adalia and the potential again for flooding. No one here wants to increase the risk of flooding in the future. I evacuated, but I know others that stayed in their homes, sitting in their, on their kitchen counter as the storm surge flooded their homes, not knowing how high it was going to get. I certainly have not been able to attend all council meetings, but to the best of my knowledge, I have not heard anyone come to this chamber and state that Cape residents want more traffic on Cape Coral Parkway, that Cape residents want to increase the risk of flooding in their neighborhood, that Cape residents want to see Rotary Park's ecology and wildlife compromised, and Cape residents want to see insurance rates increase. What I have heard is that the site has more value to the citizens of Cape Coral if it is left undisturbed and undeveloped. Protect Our Wetlands in Cape Coral have over 3,200 signatures on our petition, 486 followers on Facebook, 320 residents on our mailing list, and 92 residents here today. All opposed to Redfish Point. We encourage the Zemmell family to sell the land to a conservation organization and honor their family legacy in southwest Florida. With respect to your time, we have eight speakers who will cover our main objections to Redfish Point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Benasia. I live on Southwest First Court. And if this current hurricane had hit us more directly, I sure would be glad that there are still hundreds of acres of wetlands that lie just west of my property in South Rotary Park where this development is being proposed. A study, recent study was done that shows that mangroves reduce flood damages by 25.5%. That's a huge figure. During Irma, mangroves averted $1.5 billion in surge-related flood damages, also huge. Several months ago, Lee County Commissioners rejected a proposal, a much smaller proposal, at Eden, for the Eden Oaks development. They heard from experts, one being their own county development manager, who said mangroves typically are the first line of defense during storm events, and he said that impacts from that development would exacerbate flooding from storm surge. After listening to their experts, Kevin Ruane, our commissioner, said the mangroves did exactly what they were intended to do, and with that in mind, my motion is for complete denial, and the vote was unanimous to reject that development against far smaller than this one. Even our own city's website says that by preserving salt marshes and mangrove communities, residents of Cape Coral gain significant protection. So, given the importance that wetlands have for families in the Cape, you would think that the property owner would have given very significant attention to this, but apparently, they haven't. In documents gotten through a records request, this is what our city staff say. Regarding the hundreds of acres of wetlands that provide significant storm and flood protection, city staff notes that the property owner's application to amend the city's future land use map does not allow for sound evaluation. The wetlands exhibit is not field-based but aerial-based, and is not adequate given the scope and sensitivity of this project. Another statement by our city staff refers to Objective 4.5 of the city's comprehensive plan, which is, which involves the peril of flood, and states that the city shall take extra precautions to reduce the community's flood vulnerability in accordance with the State Peril of Flood Act. Our city staff states the applicant should address this point. The fact that the owner has not provided for sound evaluation of these wetlands or addressed the peril of flood after all these years that they've been thinking about this strongly suggests that they're not overly concerned about the impacts to South Cape families. Very apparently, though,
Thank you, sir.
our staff is, and this is a thank you to our staff.
Thank you.
Mayor Gunter, members of council, good afternoon. For the record, my name is Ruth Haig. I am no stranger to these proceedings. I've shared with you some of my personal stories of flooding and loss during Hurricane Ian. You may recall, we received nearly two-foot of storm surge, lost four vehicles and virtually everything on the first floor of our home. What I've not shared with you yet, and what I'm slowly beginning to uncover, is the psychological and emotional trauma that I've encountered over the last 11 months. For 337 days, I've woken up and went to sleep in problem-solving mode. My mind is in a constant frenzy, trying to figure out the whats, hows, whos, and whens of trying to put our life and our home back together, piece by grueling piece. I wake up in the middle of the night, and my mind races to what I forgot to address that day or what tomorrow's things-to-do list should look like. I keep a notepad on my nightstand to scratch notes to myself, always hopeful that I'll fall back to sleep before my mind takes off into hamster whale mode. However, most nights, I am left wide awake for hours at times, filtering through random thoughts, like what I might say to you here today, for instance. I've come to learn that that kind of stress and manic processing takes a heavy toll on every aspect of your life. The other day, my husband referenced a dessert we took to a neighborhood barbecue a few months back, and I literally had no recollection of it whatsoever, none. It's a very bizarre feeling to go through the motions of life, yet forget so many details, and that makes me sad because I live and thrive in the details of life. Travels to see my family back in Ohio, or for them to visit me for that matter, have become almost non-existent. My parents, who also flooded, and my sisters moved here just a few months before Ian to live out our retirement years together. Ian has stolen at least the first year of that dream. We also volunteer for the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife Organization, something that we had to give up back on September 28th of last year. I really miss that and hope to get back to that soon. My mind is also preoccupied with this very important opposition, and if all of that is not enough, I'm stressed with the knowledge that there are more storms brewing out there. Storms, not storm. Record weather and water temperatures should serve as a huge glaring warning of more of these intense storms in our future. July was the hottest month on record on Earth's, it was the hottest month for Earth on record. And without the security of adequate storm protection, that knowledge terrifies me. As you can see by the audience today, I'm not alone. Everyone here in opposition of this project has their own horror stories of loss and survival. I am certain each of you have your own personal stories. So, when the time comes to make your decisions on this development, we are asking you, begging you if we, if we must, please stand with us, with your community, with your neighbors, with your family, and your friends to stop this unwanted and potentially dangerous development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gunter and council members, my name is Bill Barrett. I'm here today to urge you to vote against the huge development at Redfish Point. I've addressed you several times before about the countless negative effects of this development, but today, I'd like to focus on the traffic issues that would be created and the dramatically increased traffic flow the development would add to established neighborhoods in the area. We all know the details of the Redfish Point development plan. 800 residential units, 300-room hotel, parking for 125 cars, 200 boat, slip marina, and 38,000 square feet for commercial use of restaurants, bars, and shops. These facilities will dramatically and exponentially increase the amount of daily traffic by hundreds, if not thousands, of cars in this area. It will cause major delays ingressing and egressing the area. It will cause additional major problems for events at Rotary Park, and it will increase, increase the risks to children, bicycle riders, pedestrians in the area, because there's no, we have no sidewalks there. How is this increased traffic going to be handled? The plan calls for widening Pelican Boulevard from two to four lanes. Eldorado Parkway West and Rose Garden Road will also need to be widened to four lanes. These widened roads will all destroy the current livability and character of the surrounding areas, but also, who's going to pay for all the infrastructure costs of the widened roads, the stoplights, et cetera? Construction that will be needed to service this increased traffic. The developers will need to pay for everything within the development, but the citizens of Cape Coral, including the 3,500 residents in the immediate surrounding neighborhoods, will also have to contribute their taxes for everything outside the development. What's wrong with this picture? We residents have to contribute with our own taxes for the destruction of our own neighborhoods? This is just plain wrong. When deciding whether to approve new developments, the interests of the existing neighborhoods must be taken into account. Developmental progress is usually good for a city, I could see that, but the progress must make sense while at the same time benefiting the current citizens of Cape Coral. This, this development clearly does not. Many of us, 3,500 residents in this area, have lived here for years. Many of us for decades. This development and its increased traffic will have a devastating effect on us and our neighborhoods. I strongly urge you to oppose when the proper time comes the rezoning of the city-owned portion of Redfish Point. This development would cause the serious and irreversible degrading of our long-established neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Elizabeth Lyons from District Four. You, the council, have two pots of $15 million each to spend. I would press the council to address several serious needs of Lee County, not spending money on new issues. Increase teacher pay to make them want to come here. Don't use the sunshine law. Tackle the school bus issue. Help residents navigate the insurance claims to get house repairs, including the roofs, completed. It is over 11 months since Hurricane Ian. People should be living in their houses, not still waiting for repairs. You need to speed up permitting. Some have been waiting for months for approval. This is unconscionable. City repairs still haven't been completed. Street signs, street lights, et cetera. Our canals are getting filled with algae, but the Rubicon, I noticed today, looks a whole lot better after the hurricane, so maybe that is solved. What is wrong with you all? These things need to get done. You don't have time to think up new items for the agenda. We already have trash removal. Don't reinvent the wheel. If you wouldn't let politics get in the way, you would have a budget review committee right now. They've saved you lots of money. Increasing stormwater and fire fees won't get the above items fixed. Forget the added fees. You have the money to make Cape Coral great again. It's time to restore our residents' confidence in the governing of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Gunter and members of the council, good afternoon. My name is Patty Gard, and I live on Eldorado Parkway West in southwest Cape. I'm here to express my strong opposition to the Redfish Point development. For background, I read with great interest the front-page story in last Saturday's news press about the city hiring a consultant to determine an economic development strategy, as expected growth will present both opportunities and challenges. The article states that the consulting firm met recently with residents and leaders in Cape Coral to kick off work on an economic development strategic plan, which will be vital for meeting the cost of growth, infrastructure, resilience, and recovery from climate change and storms like Hurricane Ian. The article mentions that more businesses and young people will be necessary for the city to grow effectively. I applaud the leaders for this vision and look forward to following the progress over the next 12 months. After I read the article, I began to think about the development of this strategic plan, and I couldn't help but wonder if the Redfish Point project might be considered for the discussions. Might the project be addressed in the context of living conditions? Let's think about what it would take to draw prospective business owners and young residents to settle in Cape Coral. Would they likely be looking for high-end resort living style that is available right next door and a couple of miles away from Redfish Point? Or would they more likely be interested in learning about what the city is doing to help ensure that employees of businesses and young residents can afford to live in the city in which they work? Perhaps the project would be included in the discussions of how the city has responded to Hurricane Ian, considered to be among the most, among the five worst hurricanes in our nation's history, and how the city plans to prepare for such events in the future. How might prospective businesses and residents view how the city has planned for future storms and climate change? Would they be concerned that consideration was given to removing protective areas of mangroves and wetlands, such as the Redfish Point development will require, thus putting lives and property at risk? And would that be seen as choosing development over protecting the residents of Cape Coral? In conclusion, there's no question that future plans will, of necessity, include major developments to help accommodate the city's growth. However, as the city leaders consider planning for the future, I urge them to reject any strategy that would put residents at risk. And I urge you, Mayor Gunter and members of the council, to oppose the Redfish Point proposal when it's presented to the council. Rejecting this development is about respect for the lives and property of the 3,500 current residents in that area.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Eileen Benasia. Many people have spoken regarding the destruction of wetlands, mangroves, and the effect on wildlife. Today, I would like to point out one major item that I believe was lightly touched upon by the developer and the city staff. In the April 20, 2021 response from the city to various people representing the owners, the utilities director stated that "The area immediately north is built out and the mains was sized accordingly." The proposed development would likely require extensive off-site infrastructure upgrades to serve that level of density they are proposing. In March 2023, a letter of intent policy 4.1 states, "Future developments requiring access or connection to public water and sewer facilities will be located within either the urban services infill or transition areas." The engineering firm has stated that "Public water and sewer facilities are located within this area to serve this development. An extension of these services will be required." June 2023, response by City of Cape Coral Public Works Environmental Resources Preliminary Review states, "There is no study or provision to incorporate utility lines within this project that may result in further wetlands impacts or crossing of the remaining resources preservation portion of the property." Most people will ask, "How far away is the nearest water? What construction will be needed to bring water to the area? How long will it take?" Looking at the map, you can see here, there's the closest well. How are they going to build from that to Piney Point? Since April 2021, when the utilities director stated that the area has been built out, I don't believe there have been any new mains installed, so I ask, "How will residents who live along the roads from the wells and water plants feel when the roads are torn up so water mains can be installed for 800 residential units, 300 hotel rooms, offices, retail stores? How will the, will the construction be along Cape Coral Parkway, side roads, Skyline Boulevard, Pelican? How long will this take? And no matter who pays the cost for construction, there will be many residents and businesses affected by just this phase of construction. Will the developer eventually request some kind of tax abatement for the development? I am fully aware that this application process takes years, and during this time, representatives of the owners can meet and discuss the plans with city employees. This three minutes of my time at public meetings is my time to have the council hear what citizens have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Purnell, and I have lived and worked in Cape Coral since 1974. I'm here to speak to you about how Redfish Point will affect Rotary Park. Rotary Park is a top tourism destination because it is one of our very few remaining green spaces. Residents and visitors go to Rotary Park to enjoy activities such as birding, hiking, biking, and wildlife photography. The proposed development of the Zemmell property includes a road that would cut wildlife off from being able to move freely between Rotary Park and the green spaces that lead to the river. Besides the fact that changing the zoning to allow the property to be sold as mixed-use goes directly against the city's strategic and comprehensive plan, this road would cut through what is currently a conservation easement. A conservation easement is defined as "a legal agreement that permanently limits the use of the land to protect its conservation value." The conservation easement is designed to protect Rotary Park. A road bisecting the land would create a deadly situation for wildlife. Bobcats and coyotes would be forced off the land into the surrounding neighborhood, including people's yards. Park visitors who enjoy climbing to the top, top of the observation tower along the nature trail at Rotary Park to look for birds, plants, and wildlife would instead see a road and condominiums. The sounds of nature would be drowned out by the sounds of traffic. Walking to the Glover Bright Boardwalk is a favorite activity of children who attend summer camp at Rotary Park. Allowing developers to construct a road that bisects the park would cut off the ability for anyone to walk safely from one side of Rotary Park to the other. Additionally, a road bisecting the land would affect the natural flow of water coming into the back half of the park, diminishing that area of wetlands, affecting the plant life and the ecology of the park. We need to protect and preserve our green spaces for our visitors, our residents, and our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, buddy. Hello, council. Good afternoon, mayor, council members, city staff, and a lot of great visitors. It's great to see everybody involved in our city. I'm Tom Shadrack, a permanent resident of Cape Coral. I want to talk about your last week meeting on doing in-house on the, on the solid waste. I got a chart that I want to just kind of go through. I know Terry is very passionate about trying to take this on. I know Terry is very passionate about trying to take this on, but it's kind of unconscionable to me that we think we could compete with industry. He provided this chart to try to convince you that we can at least break even or make money in five years on doing solid waste collection in-house, but I kind of wanted to show you some data. And I know I've been accused of being inaccurate with my information, so I tried to spell it out very clearly here. That first column is really where I want to focus on. That's the real data the consultant used last week to compare with where we would spend versus industry. So those numbers where we think we could do it for $30 a month, industry, right now, $25. Obviously, we're getting a break with Waste Pro, but we're still $4.74 more expensive in current year's data. I'm not really concerned about the out years. Let's just look at the real data. 30-month value, that chart in the middle there, the yellow, 12 months, that's 360 a year. I used a round number of 100,000 residents. It varies, starting at 92,000 to over 100 during that timeframe, but just the simple math, that's the $36 million of budget a year. So every dollar of difference is 1.2 million of loss. So if you multiply that $4.74 by that 1.2, you get $5.7 million of loss based on current year data. And who knows what the future is going to hold, whether industry is going to be that much more expensive, or we can hold a $30 rate for eight years. I want to talk about key points there. We've got another minute. Okay. You know, the fact that we're already doing this as an industry, there'll be a lot of protests from industry if we try to take this in-house, because I think Florida really pushes that we give tax dollars to industry for jobs from, from a competitive environment. Number two, we are, proposed here, city worker wages, which are union wages, which have great benefits. There's no way industry would pay $100,000 for trash collectors. That's just the reality. And that's what we proposed here with that $30 rate. It went from 92,000 the first year to 123,000 the last year. So I just used $100,000 as an average, and you know there's no way industry would pay for that. And the last thing, when have we done a job in four, four years?
Thank you.
We haven't done it. So it would take 10 years to do it correctly.
Good afternoon, councilmen and women. I'm Carl Law, and from my standing, I saved the Babcock Ranch. I collected 16,000 signatures to save the ranch, and we saved 76,000 acres. I collected 4,500 signatures to put Amendment One on the ballot, which is all about saving environmental land. They just bought the millionth acre with Amendment One funds. And then I collected $10,500 to save the old golf course. I've been president of Cape Coral Wildlife and president of Audubon. I give you some reasons to save the Red Fish Point from development. Number one, the environmentalist battle cry, "Once you pave it over, it is gone forever." Number two, and every seminar I worked, went to the last 20 years in Cape Coral, one of the things was to save it more environmentally sensitive land, and every time, it was put on the top of the list. Do your homework. Look at those minutes. The 2020 land vote was in favor of green space, was 84% of people in Lee County voted for that. 77% wanted green space on the Amendment One. 4%, I believe, just two weeks ago in the brief, was to save the green space. 77% people voted in that, that brief paper. We need more green space in Cape Coral. Per 100,000 people, you should have 15 acres, 1,500 acres of green space. We don't come near that. When we, at build-out for 100,000 people, we, that would be easy. That would be 3,000 acres, and this is what you should, your objection be, because that's what the great planners have done. I will say that, I will skip down and say, we need balance between wildlife and development. You turn a shovel and the fox, the bobcat, and the coyotes will be gone if you do not do that. The last thing I will say again.
Thank you.
Pave it over, it's gone.
My name is Marie Kavanaugh. I moved here in 2008 because Cape Coral was a laid-back, quiet residential area. It wasn't hoity-toity like Naples. We could have bought down of Naples, but we liked the atmosphere in, here in Cape Coral. But this development, this Red Fish Point, with 800 housing units, and they're going to be high-end, so these people aren't going to be there with just one car. They're going to have at least two cars, okay? If you take the average length of a car, say it's, make the math easy, 20 feet, you're going to have 1,600 cars. You put them end to end, you're looking at about six miles of traffic bumper to bumper. Now, and when we have a storm like this, evacuation is going to be a nightmare. It's going to be an absolute nightmare. Just bringing the dirt in, dirt in, to bring up that 100 acres, one foot, is going to involve 12,000 dump load trucks of dirt. If you had 50 trucks that every day just ran back and forth, if they did only three loads a day, you are looking at 80 days just bringing dirt in. Heavy trucks blasting down Pelican, using their air brakes, making a racket, and that's just the beginning. Then they got to bring in everything else. They got to bring in the concrete. They got to bring in the pipe. They got to bring in the cinder, cinder blocks. You've got to bring in everything. And it is going to be, it's going to take probably three, four years to develop it the way it's being presented, and that's going to make our life an absolute nightmare. It's going to make it dangerous for our children. Just a few years ago, you broke Pelican Boulevard down from four lanes to two and widened a bicycle lane to be part of the Cape Coral Bicycle Tour around the city. What are you going to do? Take that away? You're going to take the median away? And if you develop this, you think for one second Weston is going to maintain that median from Cape Coral Parkway down to Eldorado? Of course not. It's going to be a disaster for the city. It's going to be a disaster for the animals, and I have a solution. You just recently sold a parcel up on Kisma and I believe Eldorado for 17 million. Why don't we take some of those funds and buy that property from the Zemmels? It would be a boom to tourism here. It'll be an absolute boom to tourism. It's one of the most ecologically pristine areas in this city.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please vote against it.
Hello, my name is Pam Nun. I live on Eldorado Parkway West. In my opinion, it would be a shame to experience the negative impact this development would create. I think our neighborhood is unique, and with it being so established, the size of this project would be detrimental. I know myself, after dealing with the craziness out there, is a sigh of relief coming home to our neighborhood. And now that I'm aware of how large of an area that will be disturbed or destroyed and the direct impact on our neighborhood forever, we simply cannot allow this development to take out mangroves, period. It doesn't work out well to take out mangroves and replace them with concrete buildings and parking lots. After I experienced the major hurricane and my home was inches away from flooding, and I was one of the few lucky ones, the devastation that I saw was, it was mind-boggling, mind-boggling. Furthermore, we don't need another marina. With three existing marinas, pretty well stone-stir-wa, we certainly don't need another marina. Also, I believe that the department, development would put tremendous amount of pressure of the city and county services, such as water, sewer, and power, which is marginally covered by current capabilities. The only thing this project offers our neighborhood is a lot more traffic and a lot less hurricane protection. The only ones that benefit from this is the developers. Save our mangroves.
Thank you.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Linda Fairley. I live on southwest 10th Avenue for 22 years now. My house was flooded. But here we are, only August, not even the peak months, September, October, and we've had a hurricane right on our doorstep. Last night on NBC2 News, the weather professional, who scientifically studied the subject, mentioned, and she wasn't being political at all, what we need are the mangroves. Our current mangroves are recovering, but they will, and we can't afford to, she didn't say this, I'm saying this, we can't afford to lose anymore. She was looking at the potential for flooding all up the coast. She said, luckily, there's a lot of mangroves up there. Hopefully, they will be enough, but please, we can't lose anymore. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Roy Sears. I live on Rose Garden Road by Rotary Park. I agree with everything that the other folks have said about the terrible, terrible request in this petition. I think, however, that the requests in the petition are a ploy. It's a negotiating point. They want to come in and have you gentlemen say, and ladies say, "Well, we can't give you that." And then they're going to say, "Well, just amend the text of the plan and take out the word 'preserve,' and that will get us started." So the only thing I want to say is, don't change the plan. Don't be a sucker. The gates of hell will open if you do, because then every developer in the world can come in and do the whole parcel. So please don't change the plan.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, mayor, council. My name is Grace Gilberti, and I was not planning on getting up here, but as I was sitting there listening to everyone else, there've been a couple of things on my mind lately. I've been here about 30 years, from New Jersey originally, and I hate traffic. And guess what? We've got traffic. But anyway, progress, right? So I'm definitely, whenever you consider Red Fish Point, I would ask you, please, not to do that. Don't change that from a preserve. We need that. We need that here in this city. We need green space. It takes care of carbon, carbon dioxide or monoxide or whatever. We need, we need green space. The other thing I want to address is just the building of, of the city, how it's going. You know, the yacht club, Cape Coral Parkway, 47th Terrace, there's a lot of new things that are happening, and I don't think we have the infrastructure for it. You know, if you have to go to work in Fort Myers, right now, you've got a lot of traffic. I can't even imagine what it's going to be like when those other buildings are up. Also, JCPark, I, I can't believe that you guys are even thinking about changing that park. It's absolutely beautiful. The shade is there. People go there and walk. They have lunch, walk their dogs. You know, it's, it's a beautiful park. I don't understand why you want to put a marina there and a band shell. And you used to do concerts many years ago and just have a big Cape Coral tent or something that you put up. That can still be done. I don't understand why you have to change the whole park. The GoFundMe bond that you guys did for the parks, I don't understand where all that money is going. Where is it? How much do we have left? Don't we get to say where, where that's going to be spent? It's just, for me, you know, I, I try to keep in touch with everything that's going on, but, I mean, this is your job, right? So you know a lot more than we do, but I'm disappointed in the way things are going. And, you know, people have moved down to Cape Coral because they like, you know, the quietness. They like, it's, it's not like a different town, but now it's getting to be more and more crazy, lots of apartments, lots of people moving in that are not contributing to the tax base. So I would ask you, please review all the park stuff. Please don't do anything with Red Fish Point, and just take into consideration the people that live here right now. Thank you.
Bridgette Noraki, I've been here before, many times. I'm from the southwest, up by the charter schools. I'm here to say, I don't know why we're here. They knew what they, what the zoning was when they bought it. You people have said that many, many times, and they, when you were saying no, and when you were considering some of the stuff that you didn't want, didn't want to do, any changes you didn't want to make, you'd say, "We have to, because if we don't, the owners are allowed to do that, and we'll have a lawsuit." Well, the point is, obviously, they're asking for something they don't have a right to. They knew what they could, what was zoned when they bought it, or if the zoning changed, at the time it changed, it was up to them to come, to you then, whoever happened to be on the board, and ask for a change. The, all you, why are we here? Just say no. There is no reason, they can't sue you, and we will not have to put up with too much traffic. Everything that everybody said tonight, we won't have to put up with that. Just say no. Look it up in Google if you don't know what it means.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Councilmember Shepherd.
I would just like to thank everybody for coming out. I know, I listen, I believe other council people listen as well. Your input's very important, and knowledge that you find out is very important. And so thanks for coming out. Thanks for being involved, and thank you for all being professional today in this meeting. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll move on to item nine is business. Nine A is the consent agenda. I'll now open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items. If there's no items, councilmember Steinkie.
Yes, mayor, thank you. After speaking with the city attorney and city manager in review of item number 16, I'd like to pull that just for conversation on one small section in C1B.
Okay, so we got item 16? Any other items?
Yes, please. That's it.
All right. We don't have any other items? Do I have a motion to approve the other 15 items?
Motion to approve.
Madam, city clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Long. Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Hey, councilmember Steinkie, since you pulled item 16, you had the floor.
Thank you, mayor. In the In the, in the new council agenda rules and procedure, in items C1B, since, since we're making this, if you will, permanent, I, I just thought it might behoove us to look at the potential for an emergency situation, since we meet every, typically every two weeks. Certainly, something can come up on an emergency basis within that two weeks, testing positive for COVID, a family member with an emergency out of town, something like that. So, while the, the thought would be that two weeks ahead of a meeting, one would know whether they would need remote participation, certainly, emergency, an emergency could arise that should be considered, and the city attorney said that that shouldn't be too much of a problem to have some type of verbiage in there that would accommodate that.
Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah, I would also add kind of what we just went through, possible like hurricane, tropical storm, so if we can't get out, that would be a way I would say we can go remote, too, just in case something happens.
Okay. Any other comments?
That's all, thanks.
I mean, you know, for me personally, I guess we could sit here and what if all day long, and there's going to be a million scenarios that maybe doesn't apply to this. I think this gives us a baseline, you know, I mean, to me, it's going to be extremely difficult, because was it an emergency for you, councilmember Steinkie, might not be an emergency for me, or some other council member. So, I don't know the definition of an emergency. You know, so, I understand what you're saying, since we can, you know, it's just so hard. I mean, just keep it the way it is then.
Well, the, the chiming that I would have would be, we vote for it anyway. So, the, whether it is an emergency or not an emergency, it's going to get voted on anyway. The, the, the ability to participate remotely is going to be voted on anyway. The difference is whether, whether it's voted on at the, the meeting, the voting meeting immediately proceeding, which is, could be, which normally would be two weeks in advance, or whether, based on an emergency, it would be voted on at that meeting. I, I just, I just think that you've got to accommodate, or you should, since, since we're formalizing this and putting it in writing, that we ought to make some accommodation for an unforeseen circumstance like that, that wasn't known about two weeks prior. And it's going to be voted on anyway. You could be, you could vote and say, I, I don't think that's an emergency, too bad.
Okay. Councilmember Long.
Yeah, I agree. I think I actually raised that point last week during the meeting. I mean, at, at this point, my thoughts remain the same. I think there's so many caveats now, and, and ways in and ways out of it, that it's become so nuanced that for me, I'm almost in the same direction that councilman Steinkie was saying, we're going to vote on it anyway, so as it exists now, we currently vote on it. So, right now, it's half-baked, it's going to be confusing. Really, it doesn't matter to me whether I support it or not, moving forward, if I can't make it because an emergency does arise, then I just don't show up, and for me, that doesn't make too much sense, two weeks out, doesn't really provide a lot of opportunity for unexpected events that might occur. So, if you did want to build something in to allow for that opportunity, then to me, we come full circle, and we, we ended where we started, which is at the meeting that the member requests to be participating remotely, we're there deciding whether or not we want them to participate remotely. So, for that reason, it doesn't make much sense to move forward with all these different rules and procedures, so I'm not sure that I can support it. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
And, you know, whether you call it unforeseen circumstance, emergency, I'm sure our city attorney can, you know, wordsmith to meet the, the need if, if council desires it.
And I have some proposed language, if you guys want to hear it. I don't know where you guys are at on it, so you tell me. Right now, if, if there's any interest, after C1B, after it says appear remotely, there would be a comma, and it will go comma unless the council member has experienced an emergency that prevents their strict compliance with the deadline set forth herein.
Okay, so, does someone want to make a motion with that, with that change, or make some other motion? Councilmember Cosden.
I'll make that motion, that we approve this language with the addition from the city attorney.
Second.
Councilmember Cummings.
Can we also add in there with weather disaster, just in case everything has been taking place?
I would say that's an emergency, I would have.
I would consider that to be an emergency.
Okay.
To me, it's, I mean, I would consider that an emergency, if I were to interpret it and provide you counsel.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam city clerk, please call the roll.
Long.
Aye.
Shepard.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
No.
That is one to, six ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item appointments and boards. We do not have anything listed. Nine C is unfinished business. C1 is follow-up items for council, councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. Last regular meeting, there was an ordinance brought before us, ordinance 5123. It was involving the mixed-use property up on the north end of Del Prado Boulevard. It appeared to me that there were some issues where they came to council late with some changes, staff didn't have the proper time to review it, and at that point, I wasn't comfortable with it yet. So, I've, I've spoken with the city manager, and he feels that within like two weeks, we should be able to get a staff decision on the changes that we saw. So, at this time, what I would like to do, since I was on the prevailing side of denying it, I would like to make a motion to reconsider our vote on ordinance 51-23, if anyone's willing to second that.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor, so we're only voting on the reconsideration. That'll take us back to the voting point. Mr. City Attorney, correct?
Yes, if, if there is a favorable result to the motion for reconsideration, you will then be sitting as if there was a motion made and seconded.
Okay. Councilmember Long.
Does the motion maker and the second both have to be on the prevailing side, or is the motion reconsidered?
Just the, the motion maker has to be on the prevailing side. The second does not have to be.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Welsh.
Yeah, and, and with this, I just wanted to let everyone know that if this motion does pass, I plan on coming back with an immediate motion to follow this, which is going to be to moving to a date certain, which is two weeks from now. I've spoken with the city manager, and he believes his staff will have the proper amount of time at that point to review all the changes and come back to us with a, an opinion, if the city manager could elaborate on that.
Well, I think we need, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. Let's get to the vote first, see if we're going to have a reconsideration, then you can go ahead and make your motion.
Certainly. I was just letting you guys know what my intent was.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. I, I would just like to ask a question. Is the revision a substantive change?
Yes, and staff has not had a chance to perform a full analysis on what was submitted, so when we get to that point, I'd like to provide some further clarity. I did have a chance to speak with staff, and it's a little bit longer than the two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other lights on. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam city clerk, please call the roll.
Long.
No.
Shepard.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
No.
That's five ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to, you want to make a motion, councilmember Welsh?
If I can just provide a little bit of clarification for the council, so there's already a motion and a second, so if there was, based upon where we're at procedurally, and based upon what the representation is of, of the, of the city manager, it almost, at this point, has to be a modification of what that motion was and its second. And that was originally made by, by Hayden, and who seconded it?
I have no idea, sir.
Okay.
So, the motion was made at the last meeting by councilmember Hayden, seconded by councilmember Cummings, and it was a motion to approve ordinance 51-23 with revised site plan.
So, considering that the maker of the motion isn't present, if somebody has to amend the motion, and the only person that could really amend the motion at this point in time under, under Robert's rules would probably have to be the second. Alternatively, you can just push this off to the next regular meeting for there to be a decision made at that point in time with the full council. Because right now, you've got a motion, and you've got a second, and the maker of the original motion is not present. So, the reality of it is to alter it is problematic.
Okay. So, can we continue this until our next?
So, under your rules, it'd be essentially a motion to continue it and to allow it for the next regular commission meeting, and hopefully, at that point in time, we could be in a, a better position to address the motion that is pending before you.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, and I just wanted to provide clarity on the time, and I have had a chance to speak with staff. Initially, I was thinking two weeks. We would actually be targeting the October 4th regular meeting in order to have a full time for the staff analysis of the documents that were submitted, put together the, the evaluation, the presentation, the written, written comments. So, if, if you are going to defer it, considering the motion to reconsider is on the floor, if you want to continue it to October 4th, that'll give me time to have my staff perform the analysis.
And just to provide you, your rules allow for this, right? Because we have a pending motion, it'd be under O. There is a precedence of motion, so the motion would be to continue or postpone to a date certain. That is authorized under your rules, even though there is an actual motion and a second that's pending. These motions that are delineated within your rules take precedence over the existing motion.
Okay.
Hopefully, we didn't complicate this too much.
So, then, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to continue ordinance 51-23 to a date certain of October 4th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Long.
To muddy it up even further, what if we were to determine later, because I'm seeing some things in the Roberts rules, that you're only able to make a motion to reconsider in the same meeting in which that motion or that event had occurred?
Your rules actually allow it to happen at the next regular meeting.
Okay, that was a question.
Yeah, and I double-checked that.
Okay.
In the, that this.
Thank you, something was, okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, my, my question would be, if the rules say that we can do it in the next meeting, is that today's meeting? Or if we're doing a continuance, we can only continue it to the next voting meeting, which is not October 4th?
So, the motion for reconsideration, under your rules, are at the next regular meeting, which was happened and which did occur. So, that puts you back at, at where it was originally, where there was a motion and a second, the motion made by Commissioner Hayden, seconded by councilmember Cummings. Now, because councilmember Hayden is not here, under your rules, there's a precedence of motions. You're allowed to invoke that despite there being a pending motion, and that will take precedence over that, based upon what you've delineated within your rules and under, under Robert's rules, which is a, to continue it to a date certain.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion, a second on the floor. Madam city clerk.
Your honor, recently, there has been a change where we also have to state the, not only the date, but the time and the location when there is a continuance.
So, make a motion to continue ordinance 51-23 to October 4th at 4:00 P.M.
4:30.
4:30 P.M.
In council chambers.
In council chambers. Thank you.
And the second agrees?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Yes, sir. Long.
Aye.
Shepard.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, is there any other follow-up items for council? Okay, we'll move on to item D is new business. We do not have any listed personnel actions. Under E, there are none listed, no petitions to council. Under F, no follow-up items for city management, none listed. So, we'll move on to item 10. 10A is public hearings for quasi-judicial hearings. We do not have any quasi-judicial hearings listed tonight, so we will go to the legislative hearings, 10B. The first item under 10B1 was withdrawn tonight at the request of city management when we approved the agenda in the beginning of the meeting, and that was ordinance 67-23, so that'll come back at a later date. So, we'll move on to resolution 212-23. Madam city clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 212-23, a resolution of the city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, approving the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 non-advalorem assessment rule for fire protection assessments, approving the fire protection assessment rates for such fiscal year, and providing for collection of the assessments pursuant to the Uniform Assessment Collection Act, providing for hardship deferrals, establishing an administrative petition procedure regarding the number of tier-two equivalent benefit units attributed to tax parcels, providing perseverance and an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, got it all ready to go, in the nick of time. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, we're here for a number of assessments. The, we'll go through and read each title as we go through, but for the very first one, Fire Protection Assessment, Resolution 2-2012-23. We initial, we had the initial assessment resolution on July 26, 2023. We mailed out the notices immediately thereafter. All property owners in the city should have received the notices by now. The, and tonight is the final public hearing. Real quick, overall assessment is a little over $47 million. The tier-one rate for parcel at 70% is $240.78, and the tier-two rate per EBU is $2.80. And, and the calculation, assessment calculation is at 70% recovery rate. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution 212-23, please come forward.
Good afternoon, council, mayor, city staff. Tom Shadrack for the record, permanent resident. I just have one comment on the FSA. If you want to go ahead and display that. Last year at the workshop, Mr. Mason presented this chart, and I kind of liked it, for some opportunities to do things a little differently. That third bullet shows you an increase in the FSA to 100% eventually, or gradually increase it over the five years. I guess this is his attempt to go ahead and start doing that, but the dash part was interesting to me, that it should be offset with the reduction in millage rate. And the city proposed budget did not offer a reduction in the millage rate by going from 62 to 70%. I think in the last workshop, Mr. Mason said it was a $4.5 million change, just, you know, obviously, it's gone up higher than that just because of inflation and cost, but five, 4.5 million was due to the 62 to 70%. So, I think that that should come with an associated millage rate reduction from the 5.3 that's been proposed in the budget. Now, I do just point out in the next yellow highlight that the proposed millage rate increases property taxes by 15.6 million, or 13%. So, not only do we have an increase in the FSA, there's an increase in taxes by using the same rate as we had last year, and not considering the rollback rate, which would have kept us neutral. So, somewhere in between would be a good suggestion. So somewhere in between would be a good suggestion. The other thing I saw in the budget is that we have 41 new non-safety-related proposed new staffing. Like when I, as we always try to do, if you want to suggest a reduction, what's a solution? You know, we have 18 safety-related staff hires between the fire and the police. I'm not talking about them. There's 41 additional staffing proposed in this budget. Now, last year, I was intimately involved in the budget. It's a three-year budget. If you look at what was proposed for FY '24 last year, there was only three new heads as far in that forecast. Now, we're asking for 41. What changed? Why? Couldn't we predict a year ago that we would need these 41 new heads today? So I'm asking you to consider a change to this FSA, to reduce it some by that four and a half million, or even take the millage rate down to not cause all this extra tax to our citizens. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 212-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 213-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 213-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, approving the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 non-advalorem assessment rule for assessments imposed to fund lot mowing services, approving the assessment rates for such fiscal year and providing for collection of the assessments pursuant to the Uniform Assessment Collection Act, providing perseverance and an effective date.
I guess you're back, Mr. Mason.
I am. And for the next four or five. Resolution 213-23 is final resolution for lot mowing assessment. As a reminder to the City Council and to the residents of the city, lots are mowed 13 times a year. The lot mowing program consists of vacant parcels. You guys need to flip this over and put it back up on the screens. Okay, I'm not sure what happened here. Here they come. Sorry about this. Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Again, I'm sorry about that. Anyways, lots are mowed 13 times a year. We have, a lot mowing program has four different districts. Program begins in January through November. We also include peper tree removal in this assessment, as well as owl nest trimming. And we do that beginning in May through January of each year. We calculate, we calculate the rates based upon a 5,000-square-foot lot, which is the normal lot size. We recognize it takes two lots to build a residential property. But in this case, the districts, we have one in the south, and we have three districts in the north. The general 5,000-square-foot lot by district are anywhere between $60.10 for District 1 through $39.46 in District 4. The same for standard parcel, which is 10,000 square feet. District 1 is approximately $120, and District 4 through District 4, $78.92. And that is it. If you have any questions?
Okay. Thank you. I now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 213-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 213-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Resolution 214-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 214-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, relating to the imposition of stormwater user fees, establishing the amount of the user fee for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, imposing user fees against property within the city to fund the city's stormwater program, authorizing the collection of delinquent stormwater charges, approving the stormwater user fee role, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members. The stormwater assessments, we had the initial resolution on the 26th of July, and we sent out the notices to the property owners. Just as a, and this is the final resolution. So a reminder to the council, and we prepared a, or we set, we put out a RFP, and StanTech reassessed our stormwater fees from 2023 through 2033. It's recommending our, the fees increased by $7 from 2023 to 2024. As a part of that, and we're required to have an annual stormwater user fee rate resolution. And some of the things that this additional $2 that was an increase over the original $5 from the previous rate study, part of it is increasing the level of service operations and maintenance that we're putting in place. Specifically, we're adding crews for both sod and swale and pipe crews, which will increase the response times for repairing and fixing several of the issues associated with swales and pipes in the city. And we also have a number of capital improvement projects, continued water quality projects. We also have wear improvement projects at $1 million, flooding prevention, as well as drain pipe replacements throughout the city. So as again, the recommendation rate and what was noticed to the property owners, $142 per ERU. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, thank you. I now open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 214-23, please come forward.
Hi again, my name is Grace Jill Birdkey. And regarding the resolution with stormwater. When I moved to Cape Coral, they said that stormwater would be free. And I'm just wondering why things keep going up. It's something that's there. And why, I don't understand why it keeps going up. I mean, I was told that we were going to be able to use as much as we wanted. There was never going to be a fee. And of course, there has been a fee for quite a while. But I'm just wondering why, why some, why an increase every year? Is it just because things cost more? I mean, what is the, is it labor?
Well, with respect to the stormwater fee, yes. Their inflationary rates have hit everybody, and it costs more to do everything that we do. As we increase the level of service by adding additional staff, as I recall, the city manager at the initial resolution had commented on the fact that we are almost a year behind in doing our swale restorations. And so, swale work, actually. And so, you know, what we're trying to do is we're trying to move this up and get things taken care of. Because with, if you don't correct the stormwater system, you're going to have more flooding in the city. So that's one of the reasons why the rate continues to go up and will continue to go up over, as year by year goes by.
Okay, so you do the swell work? Your department does the swell?
Ma'am?
Yeah?
You have about a minute and 55 seconds. This is an open dialogue, so go ahead and make your argument.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Any things, but we're not going to go back and forth with questions and answers.
Okay.
You have three minutes to make whatever comment you would like to make.
Okay.
And then staff will make a comment thereafter.
I just wanted to ask if the swell work is actually done by that department? Or is that done by engineering? That's number one. And then the second thing is regarding water, and I don't know if it's under this or not. I got my water quality report, and there was nothing in there regarding testing PFAS. And I was just wondering, I don't know where to ask this. I was just wondering if we do test and why don't we test? That's all.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I believe we just had a miscommunication. So this hearing is on the stormwater fee, and the resident was referencing the unlimited usage of the irrigation water and the costs related to irrigation water. So we'll have somebody from utilities contact her and get with her before she leaves to discuss the utility rates for the irrigation fee and then also any testing for PFAS in the water.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during citizens or the public hearing for 214-23? Okay, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 214-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Resolution 215-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 215-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, approving the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 non-advalorem assessment rule for solid waste service assessments, approving the solid waste service assessment rates for such fiscal year and providing for collection of the assessments pursuant to the Uniform Assessment Collection Act, providing perseverance and an effective date.
Mr. Mason?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. This is for the final resolution for the solid waste assessment, residential solid waste assessment. So at the July 26 council meetings, council approved a solid waste increase for the contractor of 4.82% for the CPI. At the same time, we also established a noticed rate of $304.37, which I'll explain here shortly. Lee County Solid Waste Division also proposed a 3.6% increase in its MSW and horticultural CND and Class 3 disposal fees. And the residential, and both residential and commercial collection fees are set by council and today, as a matter of fact. So we have finals won here today. So one of the things that we recommended to the City Council at the initial resolution, as well as at the summer retreat workshop, was that we're proposing that we increase the rates and the annual rate to the residents in order to meet what we expect to happen in about three years from now when we enter into a new contract with a hauler or whether we do it internally. And so, we're trying to get to that point today. But as part of getting to that point is that we would now be setting aside a reserve on an annual basis in order to ensure that we have the resources available when it, when and if we go through another hurricane. And so, right now, we've spent probably a good 40, $45 million, closer to $50 million for both canal work as well as residential, the debris cleanup within the city. And so, what we're trying to do is, is set up the reserve within the, within the solid waste fund, so it's available for the residential pickup or residential debris cleanup, which is all we're really allowed to get reimbursed for with FEMA. And so, as part of that, we're increasing the collection services rate, as you can see, by the 4.82%, going 152.28 on an annual basis to 159.60. However, in order to fund and smooth out the rates over a period of time, so we don't turn around and take a rate of 250 or 260 and have to take it up to 325 or higher by the time we get to 2027, we're looking to smooth out the rates today and set aside those funds as a reserve for residential debris cleanup in the future. And so, I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I now open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 215-23, please come forward.
Again, hi, Mayor and Council and City Staff. Tom Shadrack, permanent resident. I have a couple of issues with this resolution. And you can go ahead and show that first slide, Betty. If you recall, last year, six of you were here, and you voted on the resolution last year about a giveback due to the reduction we had from Waste Pro during the pandemic for them not doing service. That value equated to an $8.34 giveback. I need that chart, I forgot a minute.
Yeah.
Hold my time a minute. Okay. This was the chart Mr. Mason presented. This council chose that column I have circled to show a $5.80 giveback, and that was on Mr. Mason's chart. But it was really a total of savings to each resident of $8.34. This council elected to defer $2.54 to this calendar year. They wanted to spread that so you wouldn't see such an increase of $8 this year from last year due to that credit. So this council chose to spread that. And I didn't see on that prior chart this giveback. The council, the city is sitting on that $200,000, and you're not offering it back this time. And this was a decision that the council made a year ago. So I'm asking, why isn't that being given back? It's sitting in the city coffers. Okay. Next chart. As Mr. Mason said, you guys all talked about this chart at the summer retreat about building in this reserve. I'm opposed to any of that reserve. And I'm showing you this math because of my being accused of not being accurate. But that $32.76 in that first one, that's the difference between those bottom two numbers for that 2024, multiplied by how many resident accounts we have. And that was those numbers I took off the consultant's report that was given last year, or last week. So those are the numbers of residents per year showing how much money you're actually collecting by this reserve. $3 million this year, if you approve this rate. You know, almost $6 million the next year, $9 million, and $12 million. For a total of $29 million of reserves you're going to collect over four years. That's a lot of money, and there's no policy to do that other than what you all discussed with consensus at the summer retreat. Okay. So here's his chart again, just repeating his chart. That's the issue, that third row increasing that personnel cost, which I don't know why reserve. I asked the city manager if he could break that out so we could always track that reserve if you still agree to use that. I have no idea what Mr. Mason is actually using for that reserve number since it's built into that Cape Coral cost. So my next question, how much is actual reserve dollars that they're proposing?
Thank you.
And then give us the money back? And as you see, you're raising this rate 22.4%. My suggestion is to take it down to 8%. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during public input? Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 217-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
250? 215? Okay. 215-23? Is that what the motion maker, who was the motion maker?
Yes.
Okay.
215-23.
And the second agrees?
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Steinke?
Yes, I'm wondering if we could just get Mark to explain some of the numbers and why not the rebate in this fiscal year?
Okay, so, yes. The chart that was shown was an accurate depiction of the chart that I showed last year. We talked about either deferring the rebate or We talked about either deferring the rebate or to the, to the future year, and that was the decision of the city council at the time. Why not put it into this one? If we did a rebate, we just have to increase the number to get back to where we were. And so basically, the $200,000 that we're talking about or whatever the rebate dollar value was, is simply wrapped into this number. So there's no rebate that would end up coming back. Again, just as a reminder, the city council, the goal was is to create a smoothing out of the rates in order to avoid what I would call a hammer shot in 2027 by going from a very low rate to a very high rate. That could be at the time, you know, based upon what we're seeing in solid waste rates and what was presented to you even last week about some of the numbers that you're looking at today, and that's not even three years from now. And so this is the proposal that we're talking about and whatever the excess is, you know, over and above what the normal rate would have been in paying Waste Pro in order to pick up the solid waste and dispose of it, we're going to set aside as part of a reserve and you'll build up on that reserve over the next four years until we have a, until we have a new contract.
Okay, and not, just not being part of the decision a year ago?
That was not part of the decision. It was not discussed a year ago. The only thing that was discussed was is that we had as part of a settlement with Waste Pro approximately, I want to say it was $400,000 and that, you know, based upon the numbers that we had available to us, we could decrease and give that back basically as part of the, part of the proposed rates.
You know, I was just mentioning, I was not here on the council.
Sure.
Last year when the division of those rebates was discussed and agreed to. And so I just wanted an explanation on that.
Sure.
If, I, I support the smoothing out. And so if what you're saying is that if we were to have given that rebate, we'd have just had to compensate for that in that effort, now I understand it. So thank you for answering my question.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. And also, Mr. Mason, if for some reason, which I highly doubt, solid waste rates decrease, having this reserve would be at council's discretion next year when we set the rates if we decided to give a rebate back. Every year, we have to do this process, correct?
Every year, we do this process and if, absolutely. We would make a recommendation and to do just exactly that at some point in time in the future.
Yeah, so if it looked like the reserves were getting too big or that it might be some sort of decrease when the next contract comes out, which I highly doubt, then council at that time would be able to reimburse the citizens for this.
In fact, part of this is that once you've established what you would consider to be a reasonable reserve, in my case, in our, what we've seen with the overall cost of doing the residential at about 25, 26 million dollars, if that is the reasonable amount for debris collection based upon a category five, then if you drop that down a little bit or increase it a little bit, whatever that is, whatever excess you have, you can use towards smoothing your rates annually. Not just a one-year rebate, it's just smoothing them out annually so maybe you don't have to change the rates or even adjust the rates depending on what the CPI changes are on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other lights on. We have a motion and a second on the floor, Madam City Clerk?
May I ask a question? If it's a hearing, should I give an answer?
Call the roll, please.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Hunter.
Aye.
Seven eyes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 216-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 216-23, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, establishing fiscal year 2023 to 2024 solid waste collection rates for commercial establishments and large-scale multifamily dwellings for the City of Cape Coral mandatory refuse collection program, providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason?
Yes, sir. This is a public hearing. This is not an assessment. It's simply setting the commercial solid wastes rates pursuant to ordinance. So it requires us to do this annually. Commercial customers are directly billed by Waste Pro, so we're not in the process of doing any billing whatsoever on the city side. Rates are comprised of two components, one, same as it is for the city side, the residential side, but it's collection and disposal. And the request for the increase for solid waste collection for commercial rates was 4.82% as well. And so the recommendation is, is to increase the solid waste correction rates by 4.82%. And if I'm here for any questions, if you have them.
Okay. Now, open up a public hearing for Resolution 216-23. If anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 216-23?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Hunter.
Aye.
Seven eyes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 217-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 217-23, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, approving the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 assessment roles for various non-advalorem assessments levied and imposed pursuant to Florida law and the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, including chapters 2, 17, and 19 thereof, and ordinance 29-05 describing the lien associated therewith, directing that the assessment roles be certified to the Lee County Tax Collector and providing an effective date.
Okay, Mr. Mason?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members, this is the annual assessment role resolution. This is for all of the remaining tax billed assessments. There is no notice requirement that we send them out through an initial assessment notice, and that's by resolution as well as ordinance. And so all of the assessments that we have in the UEP areas from Southwest 2, Southeast 1, Southwest 4, and 5, and North 1, et cetera, all through, all through, all of the remaining assessments that we have, that are outstanding. So the, so I'm here for, if you have any questions regarding any of these assessments.
Okay, I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 217-23, please come forward. I thought we had a whole big audience coming, but apparently not. So with that being said, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 217-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings. Hunter.
Aye.
Six eyes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to item 10C, is introduction, Resolution 219-23. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution 219-23, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Driftwood Canal right-of-way located adjacent to lots 22 and 23, block 15, Cape Coral, Unit 1, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 22 and 23, block 15, Cape Coral, Unit 1, Part 2. Property located at 5710 Driftwood Parkway, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be September 6th, 2023.
Okay, move on to item 11, reports. Councilmember Long, report?
No report.
Councilmember Shepherd?
No report.
Councilmember Steinke?
No report.
Councilmember Welsh?
No report.
Councilmember Cosden?
No report.
Councilmember Cummings isn't present. Just for me, real quick, and I know a couple of us from council attended back on August 18th, we did the police departments training center groundbreaking. And also, on that particular day, I attended the NPO joint workshop down in Collier County. And I attended on the 22nd, the Hurricane Ian Recovery Executive Committee meeting and also attended a meeting with all the mayors and city managers in Fort Myers on 8/23. And that's all I have. Since I see Councilmember Cummings, do you have a report? No?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Just briefly, I know that I have sent out an email to you regarding the withdrawal of certain individuals from the administrative challenge. There was further hearings regarding the remaining individuals that were challenging our ability to remove the lock that occurred on Monday. That was an all-day event. It did not end. It'll be rescheduled for continuation of our motion to dismiss based upon timeliness. That date has not been identified as of yet by the administrative law judge. When that date is identified, I will convey that to you and of course, keep you informed. But I did want you to be aware that it was an all-day proceeding. There has been no resolution as of yet and the date certain for the continuation of the motion will be identified hopefully shortly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have one announcement. Tomorrow on August 31st, we are going to have a forum for JCPark. It is going to be held at the Mercola Market from 2 to 6. And it's regarding the JCPark Public Project. Again, it's going to be an open forum held Thursday, August 31st from 2 to 6. The address for the Mercola Market is 125 Southwest 3rd Place. And then before we conclude this evening, I just wanted to thank all of the great staff that I have preparing for Hurricane Idalia from go time Monday morning all the way through yesterday. Staff was pulling down awnings, pulling down canopies, preparing, lowering the wears for flooding. And as of today, we had no major damage. So great work from our staff. We're battle tested to a five. We still have some battle wounds to heal, but we did a, we did a great job. And so I just want to thank everybody involved with preparing our city with what could have been worse. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Time and place of future meetings. We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, September 6th, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. We also have a special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Thursday, September 7th, 2023, beginning at 5:05 PM here in council chambers. This will be our first budget hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?